Okay, welcome everybody. Thanks for joining us this evening. And we are have the pleasure of having two famous world famous scientists, I think. Amanda is definitely world famous in Amornas anyway, who involved in getting us involved in the Mene South Telescope use and as well as getting David Trilling to name asteroid that he discovered to rename it as asteroid Amornas. About, I think fifteen, sixteen years ago, something like that. Okay, anybody got any questions on asteroid Amornas afterwards? It's gonna crash into Earth and all those sort of things. So with our further ado, I think welcome. Thanks very much for giving us the talk that you're gonna give. I'm sure it's gonna be fascinating.
Perfect. Good. Um, good evening. My name is Samlin Buxner. I am a senior scientist at the Planetary Science Institute, which is in Tucson, Arizona, in the United States, very far south, near the Mexican border. And I also am a professor of education, of science education. And I was gonna tell you about two different things, but when you get tired of it, just tell me to stop, and that's totally fine. But I'll talk a little bit about some work that I do in rover navigation for NASA. And then I'll talk a little bit about a study I did of folks like you. I actually did a study of amateur astronomers. And it's in a book chapter. So I'll tell you a little bit, but I wanted to start with this. This is a NASA sponsored event, and I talked to them yesterday. And they said, we want to see more dots in South Africa. And so it's an event that's held every year in the fall. And it's called International Observe the Moon Night. And it is an event for amateur astronomers and professional astronomers to host. And you go on the website and I'll send you information and you register. And then you're part of a worldwide community that is looking at the moon. So I didn't want to forget to tell you that. When you cut me off, then you'll remember all about International Observe the Moon Night. But we'll start with the rover and make sure everyone online. Oh, sounds like we're having little bits. I wonder if that's the internet. We'll see how that goes. Um, I'm gonna start with a little bit of rover navigation. And I'll make sure that we're not looking at the boring picture, but we're gonna look at the full picture. We'll hide that. And then we'll go. There we go. Okay, I'm gonna tell you about this fairly exciting project we have. That's helping us explore different bodies in the solar system. So we're very excited about asteroids and we're very excited about Mars and I'm very excited about the moon. And so it's a big virtual institute funded by a program called SIRVIE, which is a small bodies node of NASA. And we're gonna tell you about some fun field work that we're doing. And so it's all about what we call autonomous rover science. So I'll tell you what that means about autonomous rover. Here are all the individuals who work on this and all the institutions. It's lots of institutions, all in the United States. But the star of the show, of course, will be our rover. And we'll talk about how we're using the rover with software and other human beings to do that. And so the larger project that we do this under is called Trex, although lots of children want to call it T-Rex. Right? So we do have a little dinosaur we take into the fields with us to do that. But what we're really, really interested on Trex is we want to study dusty, dusty things in the solar system. Right? So things that have really, really fine grained dust. We really wanna understand them and how we can kind of interact and explore them. And so we do four themes, because you know, everything has to have a theme. The very first theme is we're making a library of spectra, so a library of light curves of different elements. And we really wanna know if they look like this in the lab, then we might recognize them when we see them somewhere else, right? So we're making lab measurements of that. But we really, you know, wanna understand these dusty places because people will be going there. We want to protect them. They muck up all your hardware. Wheels and all sorts of things and they muck up your, your suits. There's just a lot. We wanna understand how they're interacting. And so we have students in the labs who are grinding up all these samples and then they'll take a spectral library. So that's the first thing and it's really important to our rover because that rover is gonna use that library. The second is we're really excited about looking at the moon. So we just have scientists who study um, the surface of the moon. And you may have heard, but NASA is very excited to go back to the moon. So excited, in fact. They've selected a new astronaut class. Alright, so right, there are twelve men who have been on the moon. Now we will have a woman, a person of color, and a Canadian, and then an American, right, who will all be on the moon. And we're very excited. So four, four new people get to. And so we wanna say, what else can we help NASA understand about the moon? As we're gonna go back. Our third theme is really understanding the composition of asteroids, very much the kind of work that Amanda works on. And just really understanding all the bits of asteroids. But NASA has taken a left turn right now for humans to go back to the moon. So we're focusing a little bit more on that. And then what I will tell you a little bit about today is what we do out in the field. So not on the moon sadly, right, but out in the desert, in the part where I live. And we'll tell you a little bit about how we're doing that. As I go, I know I have an accent, which is very different. If there's anything and you have no idea what I said, just raise a hand. It's okay. Sometimes I don't even know, right? So, um, so why did we do this? Um, we have this lovely picture on the left. And it tells us how we do rover stuff normally. So right now we have lots of stuff on Mars. And on Mars, our rover is toodling around, right? And wherever mission control is, whether it's at the Jet Propulsion Lab, anywhere else. We're gonna tell that rover, hey, go over there. And then we send the commands and the rover goes. And maybe it takes a picture and it sends it back to us. And then we look at it. And then we go, huh, what should we do next? And then the next day, we tell the rover to go somewhere else. It's a very, very slow process. For anyone who's ever done this, my husband and I actually worked on a lander and that was our whole life. Because we just sat all day waiting for commands to go up. The stuff to come back and then we would re-upload everything. And so it's very slow. Data sometimes gets lost or our big problem right now at NASA is we have so many things in space. We don't have enough bandwidth for it at all to come back. And so right now my mission might be, it's like the traffic, it might be behind all the other traffic, waiting in line to come back. So it might take days for me to get my data back. The other thing is that it's very limited, right? Whatever it can look at, it's only what it's gonna be facing at, what the camera can see. So there's a lot of stuff. So we wanna see how can we get better at putting these things on other planets. And so what we were trying to do was see, can we do better than what's out there right now? Can we do better than sending commands, waiting for stuff to come back? And moving just like little bits. So that's what we wanted to do. And so we had an experiment, but it was like, you know, not a lab experiment, it was out in the field. And we said, okay, let's see how can we simulate what we do on Mars right now? Can we tell it to what to do, have it take pictures, have it come back? The second scenario I'll tell you about is we're gonna let the rover do what it feels like doing. And there is a machine algorithm underneath, so it doesn't just go crazy, right? But we give it some parameters and we wanted to see what will it choose? And then in the third scenario, we sent the rover out with a simulated astronaut, not a real astronaut. We do not have budget for astronaut. So this was a scientist astronaut who you will get to meet. And so this is Zoe. And this is actually a little video of Zoe from our astronaut. But Zoe is this very wonderful rover that was built by Carnegie Mellon. And it's just a test bed. Right? So you'll notice she has big tires that you might see on a bicycle. Right? But she is solar powered. And she has cameras and we mount some other instruments, some science instruments underneath. But this is Zoe. She can do some really quite incredible things. She does have a laser on the front that's supposed to help her from bumping into stuff. But she does all sorts of things. And on top of Zoe, underneath that belly there, she has a computer that's being able to analyze data in real time. So this is Zoe and this was at our second field site in northern Arizona. There she goes. But she can do a lot of traverses, which is good fun. Um, so you'll see some pictures of people, but she's about this tall and about this wide. So yeah. So not, not perseverance, much more of the curiosity stuff is. Right? And you're not meant to read this, but she has a lot of really cool cameras. Right? And if you're into all this, we can talk about it anytime you want. But the point is that she can look in both visible and invisible lights. Right? In this huge range. And we're really excited. This kind of work, especially the ultraviolet, hasn't been done in these kinds of studies before. So we're very excited to add that a lot of infrared gets done. But basically having everything from gamma ray, very high energy things that find things like potassium and uranium all the way to our long wavelengths, we're very excited and we cluster them all together. She does travel in style. This is how she gets across the United States, is in a gigantic box truck. So we drive her. We don't want her to get too tired and run out of energy and it would take forever. And so they drive her from Pittsburgh out to the field sites and then unpack her. And what I really love about the Carnegie Mellon team is these are all students. So we all have students who, under one professor, they are responsible for Zoe. They're responsible for programming her in real time. They take care of the hardware and unpacking. And so it's really wonderful that it's, it's basically how people are getting their degree. They're getting paid to go to school. And they're in charge of this pretty impressive rover. Mostly graduate students, yeah, people working on their PhD. Yeah. They do have some undergrads, but they usually don't come with us. They're usually at home. Um, there is a support field team. This is the team I was on. And so these are the folks that are running around to making sure the radio, we had to take our own radio antenna. The bathrooms there, that pumping up Zoe's tires, you know, all the things that have to be done. But we also, there was not enough integration. It's very hard to integrate the science instruments. So we did a lot of the science in simulation. And so this is Greg Hasslaw from the University of Colorado, and he has this big instrument, that's the UV instrument he carries around. So after Zoe goes somewhere, he comes and he pretends like he's Zoe and he takes the ultraviolet picture. It takes him about twenty minutes, so it takes a little while. And then we have, there's also an infrared camera on Zoe, but then this is Neil Pearson, who is at PSI. He walks around with this huge backpack and takes more pictures. And then we have some other pictures. This is a mid-infrared camera. This is another graduate student from Arizona State. So we have all these wonderful students able to come by. And then we have this really funny instrument called an X-ray difffractometer. And you basically take a sample and you grind it up. And then you put it in this, this instrument that's in the yellow box, take some light. So we basically collect a lot of stuff, whether it's dirt or pictures. And we're trying to put together a full picture of each site. We also have a field geologist with us. This is George Kramer. And George has a really fun friend with her. You can see, she brings her dog everywhere. And so right there, you can see her little dog hanging out with us. And so she came out into the field with us every day. And was our field dog. So she even had her own sunglasses. It was very bright. Yeah. Um, the other thing I always like to tell especially students is there's some other things you don't get to see on the documentary that it takes to do this work, like we had to crawl under barbed wire fences where we were. And you have to have a toilet in the fields and all the things that they don't show you on the fancy things that you have to do to do all that science you wanna do. So that's like how it's, it's very real, right? And then of course, we're very fancy. So every place that Zoe went, we had to mark it. So we marked it with GPS on our phone. But a lot of places we didn't get service, so we used the very tech, high-tech toilet paper marking. So that you could go afterwards, right, and make sure you could find it. Okay, so we had this whole team in the field and then we had a whole science team. A whole nother group of students and scientists and they were sitting what we might call the back room. So this would be mission control, maybe at Johnson or at JPL. They're not allowed in the field. They're not even allowed to peek a tiny bit. Because the only way they're allowed to look into the field is through the eyes of the rover. So if the rover took a picture, we could send it to them. But remember, we're trying to figure out, if you're on Mars, there's no CNN camera to show you what's going on. So they only are allowed to look at the instruments, the pictures, the spectra that Zoe took. And so we had a very lovely large team this year and last year, and they were stuck in a hotel room. Just looking at these pictures. But again, we're trying to simulate what happens when we go back to the moon. No one gets to go to the moon. And these are all the scientists that look at that data. The infrared, the X-ray, the UV, and they're trying to make sense of it. What does this tell me? So that's their job. We'll just skip that. Okay, so these are the places we went, all in the southwest of the United States. We are expanding out. You can kind of see, this is our first site in a place called Flagstaff, which is very close to where I live. But it's pretty funny. We showed up, when they scouted it, it didn't look like this. And when we showed up, there was all this grass that had grown, because it had been a really rainy season. And there were cows. So we have wonderful pictures of Zoe looking at cows while we were out there. So that was our first site. Our second site was near a place called Tuba City. And you can see the topography is much more different. It's not just flat grassland. But it has these giant hills with stripes, colored stripes. And so that was our second site. And we just finished our third site, just this past fall. In a place called Utah, it's called Yellowcat. It's an old uranium mine. So we were out, we did take all of our instrumentation to find out like how how radioactive things were. But those were the three sites that we've done so far with Zoe. And I'll just run you through, here's our scenarios. So the first scenario, everyone in the back room said, okay, Zoe, go there. And she did, and she sent the pictures. And they just kept doing that standard rover operation that we're doing. And so here's where they wanted her to go. So they get to put out a map and say, I really wanna see all these places. So it was a pretty wide area. But when reality happened, this is all they got to do. Right? So they wanted to figure that that's all we had time for. Zoe would get stuck. She couldn't move forward. Okay, so that's reality. You have a big amount of stuff you wanna do until we just do a little bit. Then we get to scenario two. So that took us, you know, about a week. We get to scenario two and we're gonna say, Zoe, go wherever you want. Now you can't go, you have to start in the same place we started at before. And you need to end in the same place we started. But you can do whatever you want. And we'll talk about what she wants in a second. And so she basically got to go around and take her own pictures and we just watched. Right? So this is literally us watching her go. And you might be able to see in the back, but all the humans are in SUVs in the back. Literally just following behind her, seeing where she goes and what she's doing. And so again, she had, right? So you can see where all the pink ones. Pink and the purple are where she is. So you can see she went very different places than kind of these blue. So she got to pick where she went. And she went very different places than when the scientists wanted her to go. And then number three, we rolled out the astronaut. Now the astronaut was not allowed to see the site ahead of time. So they drive in one day, just like they're landing. Right? And they roll out. And this is our first astronaut, Maria Bates, who works at Goddard Space Flight. Who's also from PSI, she's an alumnus. And she's the lunar geologist. And she and I were in grad school together, so always fun to get to see. But she went out with the rover. And we wanted to know how could a rover that was mostly autonomous work really well with a human? That's what we wanted to know. And this year she got a friend. So this is Ernie Bell, also from Goddard Space Flight. Um, who happens to be an expert in astronauts. He used to train astronauts. It was very fun to get to meet him. And so they together were the astronaut team with our rover for this, the last part of our field season. And so what we show here is you can see what the rover did. And the rover is kind of are red and all over the place. And you can see the humans in the black and blue. And you can see totally different places that they went. They didn't go side by side. They kind of met up. And then they diverted and they met up and they diverted. And that's how they went for those three days. And so what we're really excited about, there's lots of things we're excited about. We're excited that the rover is starting to use some algorithms to make her own path. But we're really excited about astronauts and rovers together. So what's the, what's the benefit of having a human? They're expensive, they breathe a lot of air, we have to get them up there, right? But why would we want to have an astronaut in addition to having a rover, which is what we're doing now? Um. People can go and just spin around like this, right, and see so much. Right? And they're trained geologists that it would take a rover months sometimes to find. And we showed that just having a human right there, we learned so much in a second. And that human could radio back to the science team and go, hey, did you see that thing over there? And they're like, no, we never saw it in all the pictures. Right? Or I looked down and I saw a thing the rover never saw because it wasn't in the field of view. It's really quite amazing. They can break rocks really easily. It's really hard to get a robot to break rocks up. But she can take her rock camera and crack it open and see amazing stuff. Right? The human can collect a lot of stuff. Dig, right, do lots of stuff. So there's a lot of things. This is the paper we're working on right now, which is how the human and the robot work so nicely together. And so we had this great collaboration. I will not make you read all of that, but some of the highlights are humans can climb on top of cliffs where rovers cannot go. So unless you have a helicopter like we have right now with a short battery, she can get up on a cliff. She can knock stuff off. She can use the camera. So it's a lot more fun. But the thing that the rover can do for us, right? Why do we wanna have a rover out there? Well, sometimes we went down a canyon and we had no radio signal, very similar to what we're gonna have on another planet. Right? That rover can be used as a relay, so that the astronaut can be down here. We can relay to the rover and then relay out. So that was one. The second is we expect people who study this, that the south part of the moon is going to be very disorienting for navigation. And that that rover can help the astronaut with some navigation and communication. So there's lots of great stuff. That we're kind of talking about. And I'll just show you this. This is just my fun video from the drone that I got to take. They let me drive the drone. And so you can see how beautiful this is. And so again, we wanted to be able to see how much of are we gonna be able to characterize if we got there on another planet, like the moon or Mars? So that's. Yeah. So the last part is just saying like, why does this actually matter to us? Well, we're really hoping, and again, this is the data we're crunching right now, that we're gonna be able to use all of these different wavelengths of light to help us understand. Right? So the part I didn't make you suffer through is we use, if you wanna know, we can talk at dinner some other time. She uses what's called a hypothesis map. And that's what we're trying to do is say, hey, I wonder what that's made out of? I wonder what that's made out of. And we use that spectra to update the hypothesis map. And that's really how she is maneuvering her way around. And so we're just really talking about how can we use this onboard communication? The onboard analysis to be able to use this and with real applications, because we really are going back to the moon. Hopefully within several years. So. I'll, I'll wrap that one up for a moment. Any questions of, yeah?
Did you use solar panels in the dusty place? Is it not optimal solution or will you run it?
So it is not a wonderful solution, right? And we've shown this. So we had, I worked on the Phoenix lander. And we got lots of dust, right? And so it's not an optimal solution. It is from a cost perspective and from a how much plutonium can we get perspective? It is the solution we have come up with, but I don't think it's the optimal solution by far. Yeah. One of the things we found on Mars, which is very different than the moon, is that sometimes dust storms will help us out and clean them off. But you would like to have the windshield wipers. I don't know. They're looking, because what we had to do here is come out and wipe them down. I don't know, Amanda, if you've seen any new technology, but it's certainly not ideal. Yeah.
Do you find, would you comment on your dust spectra projected on Earth? Anything from the moon or from Mars?
Definitely. So that's what Melissa Lane does this for us. Melissa Lane has made this library and that's all the other work I didn't get to talk about. Absolutely, we're correlating those just dust and ground particles to things we're seeing on other planets and asteroids in the moon. Definitely.
Okay, second question. I assume you've devised technology that has been used in Martian universe? And we like to, are you giving that, or like, improve the technology for future?
They are. So the postdoc who does this work, he's at JPL and he is definitely like, he got sucked up in a second, right? He graduated with his PhD and they sucked him up and then they gave him a permanent position. Because he's doing all of this AI work. And so they're absolutely feeding it back. Although NASA is not nearly as efficient as one might think, right? So they can tell them. But they don't always do it, right? A lot of the technology that we have sent to other planets is much older than you might think. Much, much older, right? So what we're able to use here, if it breaks, you know, Biggie, we'll fix it. But we want things that are really have gone through the wringer when we send it. And so things we have sent are not nearly as advanced as one might think when you, when you look at it. Yeah. There is no real wind on the moon. Yeah, that's great. There shouldn't be a lot of dust up in the air, like, yeah, it'll be much more underneath. No, yes. See, Amanda, come on, there's more. It's a little dusty.
I, I studied dust levitation on the moon as a thesis project. And while there is no wind, there is solar wind, so charged particles that are charged and then nothing becomes charged that it levitates. So there is some dust that can levitate at about a meter, then there's other dust that gets shot up. Many of them others falls back down from the levitating pieces. So you can still get a little bit of dust, yeah.
Quite like Mars. But I mean, that's gonna be really interesting, right? How long does it take? These are all very testable questions, right? Pardon? Um, getting back to the moon? Realistically, I'm gonna say five plus years. There. So if you saw the big rocket that blew up this week, that's part of that program. It's the private side of the program that's funded, but they were testing and that big explosion was part of trying to go back to the moon. So there's lots going on. Okay, I'm gonna, yeah, please. I was like, oh dear.
So I would assume that one of the biggest concerns with having an autonomous rover, you don't want it to kill itself. So if it gets to the cliff edge, and of course, if you have one of these things on the moon or Mars, it's time to lay. So you can't tell it stop, right? It gets to the edge. So I'm assuming there's some technology like a rover vacuum feeder to make sure it doesn't just go straight down the stairs.
Yeah, so this particular one has a LiDAR on the front. But that was sometimes a concern. I watched her do some really weird things. And so that was part of what the students were doing was continually updating the parameters in the software. I mean, we're talking real time. They'd go, what are you doing? Don't drive. And they would hit the like, emergency button. And then go, let's, let's write that parameter in. So that's really what they're writing their dissertations on is how do we do this? So no, you're absolutely right, because that's a real concern of having your rover drive off a cliff. Run into something, right? Okay, well, we'll end with some lighter stuff, right? We can put the little. Okay. So we'll go back to this one. Let me share it and then. It just happens to be that date. That's what they chose. Yeah. Oh, I have no idea. That's just their logo. It's gonna, it's usually near a gibbous, right? So, okay. Um, so I'll talk about this other project I did. I was approached by somebody to write a chapter for a, a book about astronomy education and public engagement. And they called me up and they said, could you write a chapter about amateur astronomy? And they called me up and they said, could you write a chapter about amateur astronomers? Cause you're an amateur astronomer. So my husband and I are both, um. And all the other people we wanted were not available, right? That's kind of how it goes. And so I said, sure, but I didn't wanna just write one. I wanted to actually be informed about it. So, um, this is the chapter in this somewhat exciting looking book. I think we're chapter eight in here. So I, I, uh, I got a student. Uh, Rachel Freed, who works, uh, she's very big in the community into robotic telescopes. So if you're in the robotic telescope world, she is huge into getting high school students involved. And then Michael Fitzgerald um is an astronomer in Australia. So we together embarked on this journey. Um, and it was a journey. It took us about six months because we again, wanted to make sure that we, we did lots of good research. Um, and we interviewed fifty-three people. And so we did these kind of ethnographies where we interviewed them um from a few places. We would have loved to interview like a hundred more, but we really did run out of capacity. And we also talked to individuals such as yourself. I'm excited. I love astronomy. We talked to organizations like the International Dark Sky Organization or um, the American Association for Variable Star Observers, right? So lots of people, we, we asked them. We call telescope vendors, right? We, we tried to do, we, you know, and I'm the education officer of the American Astronomical Society. So I talked to my education group and, and this is what we did. And uh, lots of people have done this work. So Martin Storsky, uh, who had been at the National Academies, has written chapters on this, uh, several other people. And in the past, people have really talked about amateurs on a continuum. Right? From a consumer, you might hang out and read Sky and Telescope or Astronomy Magazine. You might watch documentaries, things like that. You might be a user, right? All your telescope out, look, I don't know about here, but in Arizona, many people who are retired build their own observatories. So, you know, I've, I've seen really good stars at some really nice home, right? Um, and then this is relatively new, but it's not relatively new widely. There are many people who have been non-professional astronomers who weren't, you know, who actually were producing astronomy and now it is blown up. So now we have people who can use robotic telescopes, who do community-driven science, who are doing just amazing work. They're just not paid, right? They're doing it as a hobby, but we have journals now dedicated uh to such people doing work. Um, and so we're gonna get rid of that because I can't even read my own slide. Okay. And so we had lots of people, right? So Marnie and, and Martin had done those participating research enthusiasts and those who engage. There's lots of people, right? So Williams did his dissertation on, on amateurs, very cool. And so lots of people have written about it. What we decided after we talked to all these people and thought about it. Right? So this was also a way, this was uh done in one of the Astronomical Society of the Pacific uh proceedings, talking about all of us in a pyramid. Right? So we might be somewhere in the middle of it because we're casual observers all the way up to professionals, but. This is kind of how we thought about it is amateur astronomers, all of us as independent explorers. We wanna go do the things we wanna do because we love astronomy and we're really smart and we're gonna go out and do it. We're outreach agents. I don't know about you, but most amateur astronomers who I hang out with wanna tell everyone they know all about it because it's the coolest thing ever. And then we have researchers on a full spectrum. And so when we think about independent explorers, these are people who go to enormous star parties, right? Do Messier marathons, right? Is anyone thinking of themselves, right? Go to Stellifane, right? And so again, they go to public lecture series. And so we just said, right? These are everything from the armchair astronomers to people who just go out and work with astronomers. But they're everyone, right? Who's really excited about learning everything they can as an independent explorer. And then as outreach agents, you're gonna share that passion because you love it. And so you may have been someone who went to a star party, that was me. Sixteen years old, I went to an observatory in Denver and I saw Saturn for the very first time through a telescope at sixteen. And I was hooked. I loved it. I didn't even know I could do that. Right? And so I was sparked, I went to work in an observatory in college and here I am right now. And so we're doing star parties and we're giving public talks, right? And you're doing workshops and you're mentoring students and doing all of this kind of amazing work. And so here's a couple of examples I found really fun. Um, again, um, there's a project called Popscope. And there are amateur astronomers who go into urban cities like Joburg would be, like Chicago. And they just pop up like a flash mob with telescopes and they show people who may have never seen the stars. And it's of all volunteer operation and they go around. Um, we have a really big organization uh in the United States called the Solar System Ambassador. Have you ever heard of them? Yeah, yeah. So it's just, they get trained by people like Amanda and then they go out and they get to schools. And there's a little cachet because you're a solar system ambassador, but they're all volunteers. And then we're talking about researchers, right? So you're actually contributing to science, you might be publishing, you're talking about results, doing really beautiful astrophotography, right? You might be doing some photometry or spectroscopy. Um, and we are seeing again, at least in the US, a lot of high school students coming to join. Right? And so this is a little beyond like the science fair. This is really looking at variable stars, learning Python, doing some extraordinary work. And then, of course, we have what we call the professional amateur collaboration um, to do exoplanets. So the Jet Propulsion Lab has a really big one of these now. Um, of course, variable stars, you can really get into that if you want. Um, and even more have come out, um, as many of you might participate. And so, of course, all of this is like a Venn diagram. Nobody sits in just one place for the most part. We all might live somewhere in the middle, depending on how we're feeling that day. Um, as an outreach agent or an explorer researcher. Some of us might be, but that's what we found is that we couldn't categorize people because they have so many identities as an amateur astronomer. So we always say like, where do you see yourself? Right? Thinking about where would you put yourself if we were to come research you? And then we did a couple of, in, in the chapter, if you decide to, to see the chapter, grab it from the library. We were really excited to do some, um, just little biographies of different people. So this is Ryan, who was a high school student and who took this extraordinary picture. Right? From his backyard. And how great. Um, and now he's in, at the university and, um, but he just kind of started as a child and, and was really supported by his amateur astronomy club. Um, Molly is now, she's really, she uh had been a graduate student and now is really moving up. So at this point, uh, she was still a graduate student, but is taking on more and more professional roles in astronomy. And um, is from California and again, avid amateur astronomer. And now for the professional world is where she is and kind of getting into outreach. Um, Indra's um is an amateur astronomer and um I'm gonna get totally wrong. Um. Let me see. Oh, in Indonesia, of course. And so, um, he had been the president of his astronomy club, getting young people involved. And so, uh, this is one of the pictures he had taken of the sun of the solar eclipse. We got to chat with him um about all the extraordinary work he does trying to get young people involved. Right? And then Lauren Harrington, uh, who got way, way into photometry, started as a young girl. And the reason I always talk about Lauren is that when you talk to Lauren, right? She didn't get a really warm reception at her astronomy club. And so what the last part of this talk is talking about is how do we get more young people into our clubs, into doing the things that we wanna do, right? So we'll talk about that in a second. And so we just talk about our astronomy clubs, societies, organizations, right? All the things that are supporting the work that we do. Making telescopes, all of that. And then, of course, lots of citizen science, there's lots of data that we can do, of course, lascombras, um, remote observing. And so there's just so many ways to enter this market of amateur astronomy that we wanted to tell people about. And of course, during, uh, at least in our neck of the woods during the pandemic, telescope sales surged, people were stuck at home and they went, you know, let's, let's look at the stars. And so every, every vendor I talked to said it was like the best renaissance for telescope sales they'd ever seen. So. Um, so the last thing I want to talk about is who are the amateur astronomers that we kind of see in Western countries? Because that's really who we looked at, uh, largely white, male and well-educated. And they had a lot of money to spend on stuff. Right? Like that's that. And the Night Sky Network, uh, that again, in the US, um, does surveys, they support astronomy clubs, they found, right? That we still in two thousand and fourteen, I know that was the same demographic. And um, they are doing some more surveys. So we'll see what comes out of the survey. They're, they're working on to see if that demographic has changed really at all. And then if you look, um, this was a paper that really talked about hobbyists, people who did beekeeping and telescopes and things. They said, well, why don't we have more diversity at amateur astronomy clubs? Right? So some of the things were, there could be some concern about personal safety when I'm in the dark. I don't know any of these people, right? So that was one thing, especially for women. Um, I didn't have time to do that hobby because I had kids and I had to get a job and I couldn't stay up late. Um, I had reduced social contact. I didn't feel comfortable being in that room. I didn't see anyone who looked like me, so I didn't want to, to be there. Um, I lived in the middle of Baltimore and I didn't know how to see a star. I knew had that, I lived in Chicago, people would ask me when the stars would come out. Um, and then sometimes the cost, so this is really what, um, the club in Indonesia told me, we don't have money to buy a telescope. So we need to borrow one, we need to be able to use one. So these are all things that were kind of the barriers. And so there were some recommendations from all these articles that people had written about this. And so again, engaging young students, right? To create these really wonderful spaces. So going out, getting them involved, asking them to come, right? These are all recommendations. I'm trying to get more people that we want out there to be role models for them. Um, making sure you talk about safety concerns, right? Um, and when I had started talking to people, a lot of the astronomy organizations were already working on that. We wanna do that. We wanna get more people because they were like, when I talked to a lot of astronomy clubs, they said, once I can no longer take my telescope out, I don't know who's gonna be there to do that. And so I really wanna get more young people um in there. And so we're really excited about the future of amateur astronomy because we all, right, you all provide valid and reliable and consistent observations. Right? So there used to be this thing where professionals were like, I'm not gonna use their observations. Uh, but now the, you know, the professional community have gone, like, gosh, they're better at it than I am. And they have more time to sit and crunch that data, right? Um, there are some very large surveys out there that need follow-up. So, um, the formerly large synoptic survey telescope will be coming online next year. And they're gonna need follow-ups on many of the things they're finding. And so, of course, they're all an army of knowledgeable and enthusiastic volunteers. And so we continually talk about how we need to connect amateurs to professionals much more intentionally. So that it's not just one-sided of professionals getting a lot of free labor. And it's not just, you know, professionals not knowing what to do. We wanna make sure there's a really nice collaboration so that everyone gets, gets to do and see what they want. Um, yeah. And so these are kind of some new things that we're working on, um, working with the IAU, of course, uh, to fully characterize, uh, some more clubs in different places. Um, and again, the Astronomical Society of the Pacific is doing a brand new survey of US clubs. But we have thought about working with the IAU to do a much broader survey, um, kind of internationally of amateur astronomers. So there, I made it. Woo. You never wanna be the person between like happy hour and, you know. But yeah, happy, happy to answer questions, happy to have a man dancing or anything else you have without anything.
Any questions?
Hey, comments?
On the, um, the question, the problem of the data and so data, I presume that modern equipment that's gonna be improved a lot. Um, you know, the low-moon data that you can get from Mars and being transmitted to that even more, presumably.
I don't know, right? So right now we're relying on the deep space network. And the more people that are out there, they're gonna have to do something. We just don't have a data pipeline that is, is super reliable. So right, right now, my colleagues on like the Mars reconnaissance orbiter are waiting a really long time to get their data back anytime Artemis has anything going on. So I think that's a long-term concern, but it's certainly an infrastructure concern that will take a little while to, to solve.
Is space working on a lunar rover at all?
I don't know. I actually, that's a really great question. I, I suspect they are, but I actually don't know the answer to that.
Is it, it's just, sorry. It just, it strikes me in general of you, a very collaborative kind of organization in space.
Yes.
Almost as a, you know, this whole sale thing of how to get people there. Should be people have COVID, and you say, you know, COVID, but it can be the same with excitement. See, the perspective that you add to the world and the whole climate change awareness that grows through you, it's almost as if you're having to sell, I mean, you should be teaching politicians, I think, in that realm.
Oh, I agree.
There that the, you know, who's getting interest was and then this is one of the countries gonna set up a special with their bonds and say that's it. You know, how, how do you get past all that? And I mean, it's, it's a vague, but it's kind of where I think your biggest contribution comes. Awareness of astronomy, awareness of space is really, it's the perspective of all humans. And we, we certainly had a building instead of three or whatever in Harvard University. Uh, how do you use those resources? Have you, you touch him on it? I mean, get people to get in love with it, shouldn't be, um, shouldn't be apologetic, you should, people must consider that, that information is actually critical.
No, I agree. I mean, I think a really great example is the US and Russia do not get along really well right now.
Certainly.
Except also on the space station.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, the place where you have to get along, because if you take the capsule where everyone needs to be off away, right, that would, that would irrefusively damage all relations. And so you're right, like politicians don't see it, but scientists are incredibly collaborative. So we still work with our colleagues all over the world, no matter, you know, and part of what we're trying to do is if they can't get a visa to get into a country to go to that meeting, they can be there virtually, right? So there's a lot of things. I don't know, Amanda, if you have any.
You know, I was, I was just gonna say, I'm just gonna add, it's a really good point. And one of the things you may have heard last September, there was a mission called DART, the double asteroid redirect test where we slammed a state bracket into an asteroid and we observed it. I'm sort of in real time because we have one of the few places in the world that can actually see it with a head. But the planetary defense conference, they're really trying hard. This is the idea that if an asteroid can hit the earth and affects all of us, it doesn't matter if you're American, it doesn't matter corruption, it doesn't matter. The politics go out the window. And so they've been really trying to pull everyone together. And in fact, we just got contacted this week, we were talking about this, they had a conference this year in Vienna. They want to do a progress in some of the, so they're asking if we might listen to engagement because they really are trying to get, and maybe that's the reason, I, I was gonna say no, because it's too much work.
But now you're like.
Government to pay up and think maybe we should be talking to the US a little more because it's in our interests. Then that would be helpful, right? It helps for people to gather these shared goals.
Yeah, miserable person.
Yeah.
Hey, Mitch, did you?
Yeah, I seem to remember that you put, put a strong way to stop. Did I, did I, yeah, correct?
Yes.
That's probably an unfair question. Do you do outreach to augment star parties to generate interest in, in astronomy? Or how, how effective, which is more important, star party or outreach? It's a lot of work. Star party sort of, it's a lot of work, obviously.
Right.
But you do generate a lot of revenues.
No, I think, I can't say one is better than the other. I think doing outreach to get more people. So I do a lot of school science nights, family science nights. I go to the festival of books, right? All these crazy things to try and get them. And say, oh, you enjoyed looking at the sun, you should come to the star party. And I think, you know, one of the things that we've had a lot of luck with is using the university outreach club. Right? So it's like, we all have our role to play. So this club might wanna be like, we're gonna do star parties, but we're gonna use the university students to go in the classroom. Or we're gonna use the ambassadors to go into the classroom to do that outreach, but it is a lot of work. Which is why we don't see, you know, we don't see too many scientists out there, um, doing a lot of outreach just because of it's very time-intensive. But we've had a lot of luck, um, with kind of undergraduate students who are young enthusiastic and representative going out and doing that kind of work. But we've had a lot of luck, um, with kind of undergraduate students who are young and enthusiastic and representative, going out and doing that kind of work. Great question. So for us, um, our funding comes straight from either NASA or the National Science Foundation. Some of these, uh, I'll have to go back up to the slide. Maybe one of you know them. I just had met them. But for some of this work with the high school students, if I can find it, um. There is some really kind of wealthy, older individuals. Um, so boys astronomy. They're very wealthy and they pay for telescopes and they pay for the high school students and all of that. But so most of it is federal funding, at least in the U S, but I have found pockets of very wealthy engineers. I don't know. Yeah.
So, I mean, basically, um, that's Congress, which, which is, you know, it's in a territory. I worked for the territory before, you know, part of that. They, they had telescopes, they put telescopes in Southern, but a lot of that initial work was funded. By one of the founders of Google. So it was, they were initially for the L C O G T.
Right.
So the last Congress observed the Google telescopes. They subsequently dropped the G T. Because they've seen as last Congress. But they've got three or four, three, four hundred millimeter telescopes in Southern. There are almost one hundred percent dedicated, if I remember, to students.
Now, there's a mix, but they do, this is one thing we're going to talk about. We just saw a call, they have a thousand outlets out right now. For outreach and student activities. And their telescopes are all over the world. So Sydney, Australia, they're here in Southernland. They're in Chile, they're in the United States, they're on Hawaii, and so they have, and they're all remotely. And in fact, I think, I think at this point, not really, unless using their remote like we do. But well, each site has multiple telescopes. So Southernland has three one meters, you know, um, the, the hobby, hobby early site. That same observatory will be in North East. They have a couple of one meters there as well. So that's, that's a whole network all over the world that does have hours that are being. And but that's, I guess, the point there is that they were funded by the guy who ran Google, which is sad.
I'll say one of the things that we've found is the limiting factor for high school students is really smart adults who will adopt them and help them. Right? That's what they're looking for is teachers don't have the capacity, right? They're looking for, people have a little bit of time and want to learn a new skill and work with them. And that's what we found, at least with our students, is they flourish when they have some adults to work with them. Um, even virtually, we've connected them across different states to say, oh, well, let's learn this together. And so it's always an amazing opportunity to.
From the other side, where, what are the scientists do in terms of motivation? What do they use as motivating tactics? To governments and bodies like this. Part of it is loving it, you know, to give them some reality checks in terms of funding.
Yeah.
To each mark, mark in, in the, that would be a main driving factor in, in one aspect. But what are the main issues of arguments that you're using?
So is, I mean, but we're talking just like to get robotic spacecraft out?
Or to get science.
To get.
Funding to do science.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I really, so I'll talk about what we do. So one of the things that really excites NASA, uh, to do the kind of robotic work we're doing is habitability. Right? Are you seeing a liquid something, a liquid ocean? Are you seeing a geyser? Are you seeing, right, frozen ice? Like, that's pretty exciting. There are methane lake to get, to get funding for robotic spacecraft. But yeah, I mean, there's so many things that.
And if your science is harder, which is, I think, which are asked, I think it's, it is easier when you say, well, we think, in fact, we've had a great talk this week. From one of the other of our colleagues who's supposed to be around the Europa Clipper. And this is a massive mission that is going to the Jupiter system that is ready to go around Europa. And Europa, we think, has some surface ocean, which then we all start thinking, maybe there's life. So that's an easy sell, right? If there are life somewhere in our solar system, everybody gets excited. Um, the type of work I think is not as exciting. So why would you study Pluto? I'm very funny right now, that's studying Pluto. And you've heard me, you've heard me talk about Pluto for years, but it's boring in comparison. So we have to come up with a good reason. Yeah, thank you. And we're still worried about that.
This, the, the whole digital world is, is possible. One of the innovations that have begun, absolutely, you just assume we can have these little things sitting in our pocket. Um, and they do, and I mean, that's, that's what's very good.
And I think people recognize it's a lot of collateral benefits, right? So that, but things like that might not necessarily be an imperative, you know, when we say. Um, you do have to have a convincing argument. You have to explain why you think this is important, relevant, importantly. Um, and that's not always easy, but we also try and tie in, there are things like you may have heard of the data surveys. And right now, I don't think we do this. I've never heard of the N R F saying they put together a panel and said, here's the next ten or twenty years. South Africa, what we think is important. They do this in the United States. So every ten years, we come up with a document that says, in fact, this one, our other colleague is saying the planet Uranus is really high in the earth this year. And then they have a bunch of reasons and they interview a lot of people. And so, you know, rather than going back to Mars again, we need to be focusing on Uranus. And so if I put into Mars grants and you put in Uranus grant, you're going to get funding. Because it ties back into the, the whole, yeah.
You, you might want to. What is needed is a adult. And a delirious, a deep-pocketed adult to act as mentor. Very first part of the T shirt. That's a pretty fancy.
Yes.
And how much process of arriving at the photo of that image, someone should have invited, who was it?
So for this particular student, uh, it was the local astronomy club. Right? And it was Rachel. He's in Sonoma. And so Rachel worked with him and the astronomy club worked with him. And so it was years of him going to the club and doing astrophotography and, yeah. So it was kind of this community in Southern, well, Middle California that did that with him. But fairly affluent, right? Yeah. But, you know, he was fairly unique, right? That's, that's not the norm. My child will not be taking that picture. Right? That's like, we even don't have the, the capacity nor the equipment for that, so.
So you didn't volunteer anyone other than you and me to answer questions? But, but I feel like your talk leads to the question, which is, what's the demographic of the Romanus A S S A? And how, what are you guys doing to bring in young people, you know, younger today? And I like, I hope you do it instead of, it's great, right? What are the potential things you haven't even been thinking about? I mean, that's, uh, do you want to tell us any of the things you're thinking, you know, like you're doing?
Um. I'm quite sure I brought the question correctly. I think I'm honest. Demography is strong average membership of fifteen. It's approaching seventy.
No.
And indeed, difficult to attract young people. Um, there are reasons which we can discuss later, we'll discuss. I'm prepared to find solutions. And I think not only just I'm honest, all the citizens of Africa.
Well, I think.
We like young members. I think the youngest member that we had was six years old. And then the school started Japanese and then it was. But then we had young people, ultimately, after, after the university, got involved. Until I started having kids, and then of course, there's a, another problem. So it is a problem. I think anyone can come up with a solution to that. Because, yeah, how, how successful was that?
It is because you show up at the end of the football game, right? You show up wherever people are, so you don't try and wait. I'm sorry. I actually meant football, like American football. But it was like, American football, I said, yes, cricket. But I'm saying like, they went to where people were. Oh, it's Saturday night on the waterfront. We're just going to put up a telescope. We're not going to, because we've had people who are like, but we advertised and nobody showed up. I said, probably because they don't even know what a star party is. My husband, when we met, said, what are you doing on Saturday? I said, I'll be at a star party. And he went, wow, what is that, right? What is that star party you're going to? And this is someone who's, you know, in physics and well-educated. So why would we expect that anyone else would know? And so they're just, it's very successful. They show up lots of light pollution, right? So it's mostly the moon, a planet or two, but it's like that gateway to say, oh, you really liked this. Let's do something else and trying to invite people to.
We have done quite a bit of outreach in school, uh, over the years. And a lot of them pulled us up and said, can we do this again? And that would like their own schooling, with all the farms, uh, they requested. Uh, to do outreach, thought that every time it was football, it was new. We would have tans and rains. Eventually, we actually ended up seven months in a row, getting up and. Yeah, but they are quite enthusiastic.
And you're teaching them in a city.
Keep going. Yeah, well, I mean, exactly. Yeah. I mean. So many things, but I think, you know, going back, like astronomy really is that thing, like taking beautiful pictures and thinking about how little we are. In this universe is so amazing. And so. I love that part. Okay. Yes. And let's do that.
Thanks very much for fascinating talk on a couple of subjects about a lot of thoughts and things to think about for the future and so on. And I'm sure there's a lot more to learn that.
And I have Chris have a hand, if Chris is there, but you'll have to tell me what he says, because I have any sound.
Yeah, Peter, 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 uh, you like.
Yes. So we're going to let Chris ask a question or at least say hi, but I won't, I won't be able to hear him because I kept my sound off.
Hi, Chris. Sorry. Would you like to give your question? Well, unfortunately, it's not a question. I have some comments to make and, and that's a little bit longer than a question, so.
Well, I can, I can probably put the sound on. Hold on. Let me try. We'll see how it goes. I apologize if anybody.
Can you hear?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, um, firstly, uh, thanks for.
The H D M I, let me.
It would have been quite nice for South Africa.
He's, he's definitely. Um, the other thing I'll tell you, um, while Chris asks his question, um, I will leave them. I brought you all, uh, their pinhole projectors for the sun. They're really great for outreach. Um, and so they're little discs and they have a circle, a square and a triangle hole in them. And you use them to show people how to project the sun and they will very nicely project circles of the sun. And I can send you, but we use that especially because there was just the eclipse in Australia. We're getting some big ones, but I brought you a stack. Um, and I have managed to figure out how to cludge them together with little hole punchers from Amazon. So if you think they're cool. I'll give you the Amazon link to get the little hole punchers, but it's very extraordinary. I, um, we was at a meeting. And there were, there was no, it was like today, and we had lights in little stars. And we would project the starlights through the holes. And we had PhD geologists lose their mind to see how well these worked. So they're very good for the eclipse. They're good any day you want to show off the sun, but I brought you a stack of them. Um, from one of our heliophysics missions. So you can use them. And if you think they're cool, then you can make them. They're quite fun, so.
Okay. Our convention is to give a small gift. Please to see you already.
I was like, it'll be lovely. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me. I, I look forward to talking about more stuff that we can do. And I have already told Amanda I will be back, so. I like that. Oh, good. He put a check. Um, thanks. Oh, let me tell him, I agree.
Any more questions or comments? All right, thanks. We're going to wrap it up now. Thanks very much for attending on Zoom.